To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Come on.
Second. Home favorite?
Aye.
Motion to approve the minutes. There's one correction.
What's your correction?
Down there it says, "Moved by Ray Martin, second by Lee."
I wondered about that.
I think that was Sandy that made that.
This one I'm...
Oh, now I see it.
Which one, the...
I had to look a minute to find it.
To go out into drainage.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, got that. I was looking at the last one, okay.
Got it.
By Sandy. Anybody else see anything?
No.
Need a motion?
With that correction, I would make a motion to approve.
Second. Home favorite?
Aye.
Probably concerned? Let's give it to y'all.
Want to bring up my sale, or...
You want to talk about...
Go ahead.
Um, courthouse closings?
Okay.
Should we bring that up?
Yeah.
Okay. As you know, Wednesday, they close courthouse. Um, I guess, I'm looking at my people. Um, my people were at work, they were working. Um, is... Everybody else, I think, was off, I think. So, do I tell my people to turn in time and a half, thirteen, or what's the deal there?
Share the holiday if it's closed.
The holiday's true? I would say so.
Holiday would be double time. I know I've seen other courthouses do time and a half for people who are...
Okay.
But if you want to do double time too.
We're doing time and a half for ours. Uh, our road guys went out and run that morning. Uh, the patrol guys did not, but the guys that roomed with black tops wearing everything, we didn't find much. Uh, most everybody was done and back home. But they got time and a half for the thing as well. They got the eight hours for being closed, and they got four hours if they work.
You're basing that off that the courthouse is closed?
Yes, yes.
And that's typically been time and a half?
I don't know if it has in the past, but...
You still worked, because if it's a snowy day, that's...
Yeah, that's usually...
Right.
But because of the extreme low temperatures being this one, I called and talked to Wright County and saw they were doing it, I called and talked to Webster, saw they were doing it, basically. Did something.
Well, and there's some essential, some essential services that are out there, but it just makes sense to, you have to be there, you should be there.
Yeah, you can't shut down the road department, you can't shut down the law enforcement.
No, and we know that when you've got this job, that we'd be in these adverse conditions, but, you know, but everybody else being able to stay home with my people coming to work, I think they should be compensated for something, so.
Right.
At fifty below, we wouldn't have patrols running, we didn't have to.
No.
Chances.
Hydraulic one.
Well, everything's...
Yeah, well, it's harder than equipment running at that kind of temperature.
But you can't, the sheriff's department can't take the day off because there could be an emergency and...
Well, on the Tuesday night, I gotta go to Council Bluff, I gotta call at three thirty, I have to go pick up the guy at the hospital, and Ray him back, and then Wednesday night, I had to go to Iowa City to pick up an inmate, you know, here again, three thirty, four o'clock at night, so here I'm rolling in about one o'clock in the morning when it's twenty-five below zero.
Right.
So, you know, I mean, it doesn't affect me, it's just my other people I'm looking at, so.
And the other ones at work, right?
Okay.
And he's compensated for the adverse weather.
Yeah, alright, so I did something right, so.
All we can do is ask. We appreciate you very much.
Alright, that's all I got.
Thank you.
You bet, thanks.
Tom, thanks for working.
Yep, not a problem.
Appreciate it.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, Ben, you're up.
Morning. How we doing?
Morning.
For this morning, I've got to accept the hiring of Brandon Arons out of Humboldt.
Could you spell that?
Uh, it's B.R.A.N.N.O.N.
B.R.A.N.N.O.N.
I think I've called him Brandon twice.
And Arons is his...
Yeah, that's what I just wrote down when you said that.
Is it Arons, is it A.R.E.N.D. or A.H.R.? Okay.
Older fellow, younger fellow?
Uh, younger fellow. Um, I'm guessing mid twenties, I don't, I don't know his date of birth or any of that, yet.
That's fine.
Is it, is he new to the area, is he, I don't...
He's from Iowa Falls originally, but he's been here for three, four years, I believe. He's trying to get on with the fire department here in town.
Okay.
Um, he's been working for crop production services, now I think it's called Nutrine Ag out of...
Of...
His wife's the head coach here at TAF.
Wow.
Okay.
Good, good deal.
So, he'll be here a while.
Yeah, we, we had, uh, eleven applicants, I think we spoke with five.
Okay.
And he lives where, Ben?
Here in town.
In town?
Yeah, yeah, he's less than a mile from the shop.
Oh, good.
Good.
Do you have an effective date yet?
Uh, starting Monday, the eleventh.
And a way to pay?
Uh, he'll be at the apprentice rate for six months. I don't have that on me, it's like twenty-one...
Is it twenty, is it that high? It was like nineteen sixty.
It's like twenty-one ninety-four or something like that, and then it goes to twenty-two ninety-six or something like that.
Yeah, that'll...
Okay.
How is the chirping tomorrow? When you put that rate in there, that's the starting pay, then everybody will be upset that we just can't afford to pay that, but that's the union guideline, so...
Right, and it's right in line with what the surrounding counties are...
Right.
Are paying their guys.
It's just a little different than Ollie Webster County does it with the stair.
Webster County's got written in their policy that, uh, they start out six months at like seventy-five, eighty percent.
Right. I think that was why you described it.
And then they move up like five, ten percent.
Oh, is that how they do that?
Per year, and I think after two years, they're finally at the same wage as everybody else.
More a little longer probation.
Yeah, and if, if that's something that we want to consider, you know, I think, uh, our union contract comes up for negotiation.
Next year.
Next year, you know, which I think definitely will work out.
Okay.
I would make that motion for the acceptance hire on the probationary period for Brandon, Brandon?
Brandon.
Brandon Ayers.
One second.
As of February eleventh, right?
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold, carry. Okay. Anybody got anything for Ben?
Well, just on the topic of the union stuff coming up next, it's also in 2020.
Uh, I, I think, not this coming summer, but the following summer, we'll start looking at the contracts and negotiating.
Okay. Is there, as we speak, a specific separate handbook for employees?
Yes.
As, as of right now?
Yes, there's a, there's a union employee manual as well as a Humboldt County personnel policy.
Okay.
So, the union guys follow separate rules than the rest of us at the warehouse.
So, their manual is going to be the union manual?
That, and that's the one that we can change the language in, uh, and basically their, their only negotiating rights is...
Starting salary.
Is starting salary.
So, that can be looked at then the following summer?
Right, where we can have the four tens in the summertime, we can, uh, switch basically a more of a tiered, starting wage, staggered out, you know, instead of being at the same rate as everybody else after six months, you know, we can push that to eighteen months or, you know, whatever you're...
Whatever, whatever number in there you want to put.
So, would you expect that things like that and others will be addressed when that comes up for...
I, I would, yeah, I would sure hope so.
I think there's other things too that, you know, that's some good points that need to be written into the handbook, because, and we've been to a lot of ISAC events and talking, you know, because like I said, there's really no negotiation, that they, they keep alluding to putting the policies into the handbook.
Okay.
Which you just mentioned.
Right, and, and if I remember, I, when my wife was doing this through Fort Dodge, through the school system, basically, they took a lot of the stuff that was in the, uh, union policy or in their contract, and basically created an employee handbook for the teachers. But they didn't have one before, where we've kind of got a...
We have one.
We already have one, it's just what language you want to put in, what language you want to take out.
Who's the animal apprenticeship time frame?
Uh, for us, it's six months.
Do you know what the other counties are doing?
I know Webster County's got more of a, a spread out, it's eighteen months or two years before you're up to full wage, but they still have a six-month probationary period. I mean, our apprenticeship is basically the six-month probationary period. Uh, at the end of the six months, with the two guys that we hired up in Bode, uh, two weeks ago, I sat down with them and we did an employee evaluation with the form and, and the employees, so.
Okay.
Basically, at the end of that...
Working out good?
Yeah, the employees are now good.
Is that some handbook, something that we can look at as the board of supervisors? Is that public knowledge?
I think you guys have it, but...
Do we? I've never seen it.
Does it vary with handbook?
I've never seen it.
No, not just the, the union employee handbook.
Oh, the contract?
Yeah, their contract, yeah.
Yeah.
But, I mean, because you said they have their separate handbook.
Right, well, it's, it's the contract that we sign, it's...
That is.
It's all this language that explains...
Do we have a copy of that?
Yeah, we have a copy.
I'd like to look at that sometime.
Yeah, it explains what they can be disciplined for, the steps for them for filing agreements, uh, as their holidays are slightly different than ours.
Okay.
I mean, there's a number of things that touches on and addresses.
Okay, well, I'd say, I'd like to look at it sometime, or I think we all should, but because of the added and the fact that...
And the contract coming up, we need to look at it.
Well, I'd like to see where we're at now, and like Ben said, but handbook wise, it's something that'd be some discussion when that is, comes up, that, that some things may get to changed in that.
Right, and I think we deal with Renee when it comes to changing any of that.
Should we have Dave at least touch base with Renee and, and make sure that we know what date, when, get the preliminary, I don't have a clue when it is, I know it's in 2020, is what?
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one, I believe.
Oh, so it's over a year.
The talk, the discussion would be about a little over a year from now, the discussion.
Yeah.
We, I'd like to see where we're at today, like Bruce said, I think the discussion's probably a year from, over a year from now, but be good to be familiar with where we're at today.
Right.
We know what's upcoming. I've heard scum, but they, they're talking, they could possibly disband the union?
Some counties have, because you pulled, you know, you pull every rate that they've gotten, they're saying, why are we...
Why are we paying dues?
Why are we paying dues when there's nothing to fight for?
I know that Pokie has just started, because I talked to Clarence down there Thursday, and I said, so how is, and he said, not well.
What's that?
He just said, I said, how's it going? And he said, not well.
Well, they do different.
That's all he said, is not well.
Oh, well.
So, I don't really know what they, whether they're just getting the preliminary stuff, if they put offers back...
All the negotiating.
Or they just said they were just in the beginnings, and so, I don't know what that entails. That's why I think we should just make sure that we're all, I'm not saying we're doing anything early, just make sure that we know what date so we can have our...
Well, ducks know. You got, you got a copy of it, you know, jot your notes down on the side so you...
Exactly.
Things you might want to possibly look at the change and...
Right.
You have that on file someplace here where you can hold it?
We can look at it afterwards.
Good, I'd like to see it.
Perfect.
Okay.
Uh, C forty-nine, they put that big tree down?
Yes.
And they're gonna probably...
We're gonna clean it up.
Drop it to the ground and grind out the stump again, or...
Right, we left it up high enough so that we had leverage with, uh, the Hitachi to be able to grab a hold of it.
They're just gonna pull the stump out.
Pull the stump, and, and part of the agreement with that, uh, with Nave was to extend that driveway to the west where that tree was located at.
All right.
Um, yeah, I know we've dropped it, we haven't cleaned it up yet because our trucks are...
Yeah, I was just wondering if they're gonna grub it up, grub it out or grind it off?
Yep, we'll grub it out, just like we did down here, uh, on the corner where you turned to go to Thor, on the lone tree, we took that stump out here two, three weeks ago.
Yeah.
Good.
Good deal.
Stop up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Well, looks like we're going to drainage.
I'll make a motion to go into drainage.
We got time for a change.
Well, we are a little...
Write this down in your journal, on time.
On time, huh?
Yeah.
We, we could do all the Peggy stuff, couldn't we?
We got some stuff there.
The tree come back.
Maybe.
You're a committee man.
Did any of you have a chance to look over the animal control?
Yes.
All right, are we ready to go ahead and schedule that for a hearing then on the...
I would say so.
Yeah, I think we can.
Yeah.
We'll get that, I just wanted to be sure.
It looked pretty good to me.
And then all I have is an OPI update, and those are confidential, so I'll send that around, you can look through that.
What do you need for that, Peggy?
For the budget amendment?
No, 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 the ordinance, we have to put that out.
Um, we'll schedule it on a regular board meeting day.
But does it have to be published for, are you week?
Doesn't have to be published, I just have to set time.
Put it on our agenda?
Yep.
Okay.
You can publish it, but you don't have to.
I don't, no, it isn't like we need to spend the money on it.
It hasn't been common practice that we've done it that way, we should put it that way.
I would just go ahead and put it on then.
Yeah, I think we're good with it. Dave's familiar, he's looked it over, I didn't see anything other than, I hope we don't get any...
I have a copy of it to Bode.
Oh, okay.
And told them they'd have to make their own, you know, for livestock and stuff like that, but, because we took it out, but that was what we was gonna adapt to. The last page there, the fines, I said, make sure you get that in there, so we get everybody on board with the fines, so.
Did you still want me to send out what our folks went into the rest of city, sir?
I would send it out to all the other agents.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause they, they need to get a copy of it so they can mirror it, I guess.
Mm-hmm. So, with that, do you want to give them a week to digest it and put it on for like two weeks, is that, or would you, what are you wanting her to do?
I think that's fair.
If we send it out today or tomorrow and get it to them and let them look at it for a week and, and put it on for the following week, is that...
Is there any reason to install it, I mean...
I don't, other than the fact that what if they don't, if they see something in there they don't like, aren't we working with them, the cities, or...
In a sense, we are, because we want to make it easy for our animal control officers so she don't have, you know, eleven different...
Nine different policies to...
...to follow.
If not, put it up for next week, I don't care.
It's up to you guys.
If you got time to put it in next week, let's put it next week, because the following week we might be closed, right?
President's Day.
Yeah.
So, put it on for next week.
Okay.
If you got time to do it, otherwise, take a couple of weeks out, it's past that.
Yeah, I'll check drainage, if only there's not a lot of drainage in it.
I think we should, I think we should push it back, give the cities a chance.
Yeah, because if you said, if they get it and say, what the heck, we want to make sure...
Because then they got an emergency meeting or something, let's, let's push it down the road.
I agree with Bruce, yeah.
On the twenty-fifth, we got a reclass on thirty-five, and on the fifth, one oh three.
One oh three, yeah.
This isn't going to take any amount of time, it just has to be an agenda item and be voted on.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
I think that's fair, let's, let's do that.
Kick it back to the twenty-fifth?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's fair.
Give them some time to look at it.
Yeah, too many times, it's like they spend, I don't know if there's going to be any issue with it, but they don't...
You never know, though.
You don't want to get something tomorrow and then you got to know by Thursday, you get two days to think about it, maybe they want to, yeah, I think that's...
I would also send it to our animal control person, does she have a copy of it?
Probably not.
She has Humboldt. They're not from here.
Yeah, we've probably sent it to her also, yeah.
Okay.
And go for the twenty-fifth, I think, if that works.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Okay, go into drainage, Jerry.
Many reports?
Are committed.
This past Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, I had a decategorization meeting.
Decategorizing again?
Deca, oh, wow. Oh, well, I won't go into the, the, the sordid details of it, but for, for what board that is, it was pretty good for that board. Uh, but anyway, that was in Webster City at one-thirty on the twenty-ninth. That same, uh, day, we had the conference board for the assessor at six P.M. up in the jury room, I attended that. And then on Thursday, the thirty-first, we all went to the statewide supervisors meeting in Des Moines for most of that day. And that's what I had this past week.
Uh, I had a dog meeting on the thirtieth, it got postponed until, there this week, Wednesday, due to the cold, and then...
An animal dog?
An animal dog.
Control or just a dog meeting?
Just a doggone meeting. I shouldn't say just dog, it's all animals, animal control meeting, I guess it would be called. And then on the thirty-first, I was down in Des Moines also at the ISAC supervisor training.
Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, I was in the conference meeting upstairs, then on the thirty-first, I also went to Des Moines for that meeting with the supervisors.
On Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, at sixteen, I was up at the, um, jury room and then also at the, um, Des Moines ISAC meeting.
Okay, Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, I had a VA meeting, uh, up at the assessor's meeting, six. And Thursday, I went to Des Moines, the supervisor meeting. That's all I had.
And just FYI, that conference schedule is the twentieth, right, at six?
I believe so.
I want to make sure I wrote it down.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
W A twentieth, six P.M.
Okay.
Public hearing.
Yep, perfect.
And just also while you're looking at that week, the Farm Bureau meeting suffer is the nineteenth, at six, at the Farm Bureau office.
Perfect. I, I got them on my right days until they switch them.
We're pretty good there.
I would also tell you that if anybody has the ability today, the food pantry truck is coming in. If you're looking for a little exercise and camaraderie, it's one-thirty to two-thirty there. She has like four thousand pounds, and if you don't know Becky, she's very nervous because she doesn't have a lot of help lined up, so I didn't tell her I'd get some, I'm pleading, begging.
Begging, yeah, like you say, calling...
I'll give you a hour.
Comes in, I'll, I'll be in town, I can zip up there. But I just don't want to zip up there and wait for an hour.
I know, I don't either.
So, see, if they call you, just relax.
Time frame is one-thirty to two-thirty.
Well, they give you a time frame, it's one, they try to get there by one-thirty, but sometimes it runs before and sometimes he's running back. We're on a different route now, it used to come in the morning, so the one-thirty is the tentative landing, and two-thirty, if he's running late, he still usually has to go up towards Emmonsburg, so they like to get here earlier, so. We ready to go to drainage?
Yeah, uh, twenty-ninth, I supposed to have had a hazmat meeting, but I did, did get canceled on the truck, uh, financing of it, and they, they extended it for us, so now I've got to go on the thirteenth, so. That's where we're at on that truck is the financing, which way we're going to go. Got to vote on that, but, uh, that got canceled last week, so.
Okay.
Now we go to drainage.
Make that motion.
Unless you've got something else for us.
No.
Okay. Hold, second? Home favorite?
Aye.
Hold, bring drainage. Five minutes early.
Well, most part is, like I say, I usually go in and try to snag somebody in the secondary roads if the trucks, if they're around, that way, that's why it was always nice when it came at eleven o'clock.
Yeah.
Because they'd come back for lunch and usually caught, catch one or two of the guys, and Becky's mom fell down yesterday, so she spent most of the day, or most of the weekend at the hospital with her, so she was, said I didn't do a very good job getting people lined up, so.
You know what that's like?
Yeah.
I think we've all been there.
Are you ready for coffee there?
I'm, I think so.
Uh-oh.
You got a cup?
It looked like you were like, ah. I even put tea in this morning instead of water.
Send me something a little stronger, huh?
Yeah.
Might be too strong this morning.
Did you make it?
Yeah.
Did you do your salt thing?
No, there ain't no salt up here.
Thought you were going to bring some.
If I gotta keep making coffee, I guess I will.
Ah.
I don't care, because I don't drink it.
Yeah, I know.
That's like when you serve it at the church, they always say, well, is it decaf or is it regular? What do you want?
Yeah.
I want decaf, that's what it is.
We always put decaf on the left and, because we've been earning the regular on the right, so it's regular, regular is right. Well, why does that, I said, just because regular is right.
It's easier to remember it as regular.
You don't have to think about it?
Right.
You know?
Slippery. It's not terrible, though, it can, it was rough enough, it's not that cool air that you get sometimes, so, yeah.
My great family's got to go to Fort Dodge today to babysit all this week, that's...
Thanks, Bruce, I'll put this in the minutes, you call it.
Thank you, sir.
Good advice.
Did you look at this?
Yeah, I looked at the Kansas City.
That's interesting. Off the...
So ways to go.
Yeah.
About the master matrix.
I don't get, haven't been able to do that, so.
Huh. Who's his friend?
Dave Haynes, what's the American concrete?
I see. And he's pro...
Anti-how.
Anti-how.
But I can, he cites a lot of good information, and we do have the concerns. So this is one thing you probably, it's just interesting to take a look at that. Little boy, Rick.
Appreciate this very much.
Welcome, I, a couple of them I kind of forgotten about, the newer ones, it's like, Laura in the office says, why aren't you going to the food tent? Do you remember the other one on there? Yeah, she had it, so.
So, what, beans, we aren't in session yet, I heard a lot of good reviews about the community chorus this weekend. Didn't you remember? I thought I'd...
I went to the community chorus, and that was a good show, and Trish held up pretty well, given the fact that she was up all night before pulling lamps.
My wife said that, uh, her mother and my mother always went, so they're both gone now, and my wife said, your mom and my mom would have enjoyed it. She said the bands was very, very good.
Excellent.
The band is.
Excellent.
The music just, it would have been right up their alley. I said, well, that's, I'm sure they heard that, so.
Yeah.
That was a very, very good show. They, I would, you know, I have no affiliation with community chorus, other than going to the shows, but I could see by sitting there, uh, the demographics of the age of the folks that are in it, they definitely could use some younger people to, to...
Is that a...
That's a plan.
Well, we're talking about you specifically. I want, footnote, Trish is probably one of the younger, she's on the younger side of the age. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I think the whole story goes there.
Well, there are the trouble, like, throw away. There's some, it's hard when, you know, people move away and then they come back.
It's a huge commitment, I mean, it's a lot of...
Well, I talked to some, you read the program, years that they've been in it, and I talked to some of those folks with big numbers in front of the years, and, uh, they're contemplating that they're not going to do it forever.
Well, I can attest and could probably give you a list of people that, when I sit behind them in church and I sing and I get this.
Well, we know you're not going to probably take part in it.
And I'm not a band guy, so, so, I used to just go and watch once in a while, but...
Yeah.
Well, see, I could make those comments for advantage. But it was a real excellent show, they did a great job, as per usual.
People turn around and look at me, I'm like, oh, okay.
I just tell them, I, I never claimed to be...
When they get up and move, then you know you're bad.
I never claimed to be a good singer, I just try to
Do the best I can.
make something.
Yep.
Okay, before we get in more trouble. There you go, there's more trouble.
That's okay.
We're going to drainage, D D. thirty-three, branch C.
Okay.
Appraisal report, I don't, yeah. I need to give you a couple sheets probably, um, Trey Keenest and Pat Hill are the two appraisers working. They asked me to increase what we were paying for temporary easement. And what I did is I redlined what I used before, changed the number. This will be the cost per acre for temporary easement. Compaction. All right, I thought we had a number wrong on my agenda, it says branch thirty-three, it should say thirty, eighty thirty-three, it should say thirty-five. Oh, and I, and I looked at it, I was a little confused.
Wait a minute.
Wait a minute, this, this is...
Good catch, forty-five.
Yeah, I was, I was sitting here thinking, oh, I missed out on, yeah, our, our agenda held thirty-three, and, and I was, I was confused.
Okay.
Because I, I was wondering what we're doing on thirty-three, and so, we'll make that correction here now. Yeah, you'll see, here we had, we did the same, like, percentage adjustment. We hit a hundred percent first year when it's all destroyed, and then the next year after that, we allowed for sixty percent loss, and then you can see graduated down sixty, forty, twenty-five, fifteen, ten. And what they had me, asked me to do was adjust the price per bushel that we were allowing. They said, with marketing and things, that they, they thought my three fifty might be a little low.
Yeah.
You know, who knows? So we have to...
If you know, let me know, what you're going to do.
Well, you're taking an average, and that price sticks with the five-year program solve. I all know the price.
Hopefully, it will increase.
Right.
Exactly.
Right, because if it, yes, and all the farmers hope that in five years it's higher than it is today, so that, but that would make it a little bit more fair over the life of the damage.
Yes, that was, that was their intent with this. Um, the permanent easement area, the, what we tried to do is maybe a fourth of the value of the land, um, it's ten thousand dollars an acre, it's, allow for the twenty-five hundred that we have. Again, it's just a number, um, the, the easement, the permanent part, the good thing is they can farm over it just like there's nothing there, I mean. It's theirs, planted every year, harvested every year, but we have the right to go in there for maintenance or repair.
Without...
For the life of the tile.
Without...
Paying damage.
Right.
Right.
If you're over the easement, we kind of had a slight discussion on it, and that width of that permanent easement?
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet.
Yeah. Basically allows you to drive in there.
Yeah.
And if you have to do any work, you're going to probably get out of the...
You just might have some damages there.
Yeah, probably true, that's, that's probably a good summary, yeah. At least it maintains your right. To go in there and check. Someone says there's something wrong, you can drive out there and check. Yep, yep, drive it out. Dig it up.
And I mean, through, with the thirty-foot permanent easement, technically you can drive right over the top of that tile line.
Yes.
And to go out and look at it, without going to the damage.
And, and we've got permanent G P S. location as far as the, the tile itself, so. And that easement is good for the life of the tile. Yeah, yes.
So do these numbers on this sheet reflect these then?
Yes, if, if you look at the second column from the right, that, you'll see the twelve sixty-six per acre.
Yep.
So the permanent is thirty foot wide, the temporary is a hundred foot wide, and then we use the twenty-five hundred dollars for the permanent and the twelve hundred and sixty-six for the temporary.
So this is, the total is the total, then?
Yes, yep, and we're, we're basically officially filing this, and, and then you'll have to set a hearing on it, is the procedure. Can you remember the, is it forty days on the first report? I think so, making sure. I think it's to get, this is to close out, the completion hearing, you only need ten.
So you'd actually have to be forty days out to make this official on the appraisal report?
This is just the submittal.
One question on this, and I've seen this come up on...
When we get done for further discussion.
We're not missing anybody. Are there anybody missing?
Should be.
Did you go through this with the commissioners?
Yes.
And that land, because one thing...
Because this basically is over the tile line, so you shouldn't miss anybody. Right, right, yeah, and we've got each of the owners on the plans even.
Okay.
For each second.
Yeah, you're right, Rick, but I have seen on some damage where we've gotten something after the fact, and you just can't do anything with that. Now granted, whether or not, this is on a different project, whether or not that was a, a permanent easement thing, or, but it was a damage claim submitted after, and there's really nothing you can do about it.
No, no, if something happens later, two years, three years down the road, yeah, there's really no way to go back on a contractor.
Trish, does that put us out like March eighteenth? Is that, is that six weeks? That'd be forty-two days.
Two, three, four.
Six weeks.
Six times seven would be forty-two, and you need forty.
Yeah, that would be good.
And it looks like...
Where's you at on that then?
March eighteenth.
March eighteenth, but we're open.
March eighteenth.
I mean, we got to start filling some of these in, Trish.
March eighteenth? And this is all per drainage law protocol?
Yep, you submit the report, you accept it, it's at a hearing date at least forty days. All right, I'll make, I'll make a motion to accept the appraisers' report for D D. thirty-five, branch C. for March, they have a hearing date on March eighteenth at nine o'clock.
I'll second that, and I just have a question, do we have to make two separate motions, or can we combine?
Oh, yeah, you're right, I did do that tonight. I can, okay.
You can, so, yeah, because we accept it, and we're setting it for March eighteenth.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, and I second Rick's motion.
Any other discussion on that? Not all in favor?
Aye.
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 All, carry.
Right on the bell, button for...
Okay, D D. eleven, sub five.
Same values per acre, so that part of it's easy.
Thank you.
Same process, thirty foot wide over the tile for the permanent, allow twenty-five hundred dollars an acre, a hundred feet wide on the temporary to do the work initially. And that's up at twelve hundred and sixty-six, um, dollars an acre.
Anything jump out on these?
No, um, it's the same situation with the appraisers, the, you know, they readjust that to twelve sixty-six, um, within last week, but, uh, I had it prepared with a lesser number before that three dollars and seventy-five cents, so I got that adjusted in, in, on the agenda for today instead of Monday, last Monday.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, merchant property on the list. Uh, Ross Keeler, merchant properties, I don't know whether the tile doesn't extend into there, so even though we get drainage, I don't know if he's part of the, uh, district.
I'd have to look where he, where they own, I guess, uh...
To the east of Hunter Marks, I don't think the tile.
Oh, to the east of Hunter Marks, yeah, they wouldn't be listed in this.
Okay, now first one, you got Carla J. Peterson.
Life estate.
Is that a state?
State, I imagine, yeah.
I don't know if it was a trust or a state or what, so.
Yeah, the L E. there, uh, at the end of that one's for life estate. Let's have a look at Ross.
Question on the very end of this tile, where it goes, does it, does go across the blacktop, does it not?
Mm-hmm.
Isn't that David Hunter Marks' ground, that it's in?
No.
No?
That's Carlos's.
No, it's not, but I think.
He's...
North of his house?
Yes.
I'm pretty sure that's Carlos's.
Okay.
Carla Peterson's property, I don't think it's...
You know what I'm talking about, Bruce, for, because it does go across, it does go to south.
There's a little slew there.
Yep.
Yeah, he farms, he farms, but it's Carlos's property, there you go.
I just, there again, we're not, that somebody's not missing landlord wise, okay.
And he extended his house from what he does own further south up.
Up to it.
Yeah, and you're right, there was a slew out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that was my...
I'm almost positive.
I think you're right, you're right, if you looked at the flat book, yes. There again, that there's not anybody missing.
No.
Well, obviously, like I said, Rick, this should be fairly simple because it's the tile.
Yeah, exactly, yes.
No, would that, that jog my feeble memory that what Bruce said, that does make sense, and that's listed here, so.
So, yeah, it's the same process as far as hearing and all of that.
Well, if we have that on, uh, eighteenth, is that right?
Should we just put fifteen minutes behind the other one?
Fifteen minutes enough?
I should, because it's pretty simple.
Yeah.
Well, if we can
Fifteen?
do this in a single motion, then I would make the motion to accept the appraisers' report for D D. eleven, sub five, and set the hearing date and time for Monday, March eighteenth at nine fifteen.
I second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All, carry.
Do you want to bring that up before, or are you going to wait?
I'll wait, because we still got one thing yet to, first, first we got time. Uh, this is just for discussion, uh, being we got time before twenty minutes, five minutes. I had a conversation with some landowners from thirty-five C. He was questioning, uh, why God easement would, um, be better than annexation of property. And, um, he thought maybe we should slow the process down a little bit, so they can think about it a little harder. Um, and one of the other landowners is gone for a week or two, I think, and, um, he was just wondering why I was, made that motion to do that, and I explained to him, I thought it was a much quicker and, and easier process to go through, and, uh, he wanted us to look at annexation a little harder. So I said, there's no rush, those trees have been there now for twenty years or so, I said, another couple of weeks ain't going to hurt nothing. Um, so I said, we'll look at it, I said, all we're doing is getting information to see what costs are and stuff, so.
I think the, probably the biggest reason that it was, the push was on was trying to do it before the weather warms up, and then we're out there trying to dig down there and mucky.
And his thought was, is it going to hurt to wait another year? I said, probably not. I said, we're just trying to get this taken care of while we had it on our, on our mind, rather than pushing it back another year.
I don't want to, I'd like to see those plugs in those two or three locations that are causing backup up in there, but I guess ultimately, like, stops the water from, from that area coming, so the cleaner we can get it flowing down through there, the, the quicker we get it to the river and get it out of there, that's my opinion.
I know exactly what Rick's talking about, and, you know, you can't get exactly in the thought process of the upstream landowners that are, you know, affected.
His, his thought are, is that the water flow isn't going to change that much, because it's the same on our acreage, and not like draining an extra slew that never used to be drained. So he doesn't think it's going to be that urgent that we have to push it through, so.
But on the...
He just wanted us to look a little harder at annexation.
On the flip side, you, you kind of understand that feeling that they should pay for something.
Right.
That, when you talk annexation...
He thinks they should pay for, pay for some of it because they are getting some benefit.
But on the flip side, and we've had the discussion, that will take a long time, quite a while.
It's a longer process, yeah, that's what I told him, it's a longer process, is that more expensive?
Yes.
That's true.
And I did ask the question, that if we keep moving forward for the expediency with the easement, just to get this done, because it does need to be addressed sooner than later.
Yes.
Doesn't prohibit annexation in the future.
Correct.
The easements don't prohibit annexation.
Right, that's correct, right.
It's just...
But you can't go back and recoup the cost. Yeah, you can't access it for something you did five years ago.
Right, you can't, but you, you can, but I, what I'm afraid of is like Bruce is saying, and we all kind of know, it's going to drag, 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 drag.
And that's what I told him, that's why we're kind of pushing it through, because it was on the plate, it's the quickest, cheapest way to get it done, yeah.
Wasn't this the one that...
But then again, they're going to pay the bill.
Kent brought papers from, minutes from like nine years ago?
Yes.
So it's been sitting on the plate for a long time.
The, the actual article he brought was just for the ditch cleanout, though.
Oh.
We did study that a little closer.
Okay.
Oh, it wasn't for this.
I, I just wanted to share with the other board members, the conversations I've had with some landlords.
Wasn't there, we, we published and none of the landowners showed up, correct, when we did this?
We went to...
No, we had, we had, we had some of the people.
Yeah, we had some weeks earlier.
Oh, okay.
Earlier.
Last fall.
Okay, but not this recent time, we were talking about it, okay.
And that's, yeah, the discussion was on the easement, and there really was no huge pushback on it.
Yeah, see, the, the landowners there aren't going to cost them anything, so you can see why they don't come in.
Come in, okay.
Now, if you put annexation in here, we're going, we're going to have a full house.
Right.
And the process is slower, it's more expensive, um, but there again, the, the upstream landowners' bill will be less, because we'll be spread over more acres and...
That makes sense.
Probably a little more equitable, because it is, you know, his thought is, why should we clean up their negligence for the last twenty years? Why should we have to pay for it?
But by the same token, how do we know it was theirs when their water's draining through that area? That water could have been the reason that it pushed some of them trees through.
I know, yeah.
I mean, you can argue about this...
Yeah, I think you look at it both ways.
Sharing what I, my conversation.
That's a good, good thing, I, I mean, I think our thought process is just, does benefit the water flow to get a cleaner channel, and it certainly benefits the folks that, that drainage water's going into, not so much the people that may live next to that area that we want to clean out. I mean, and I understand, I mean, human nature, you just, well, they live there and they're not paying anything, you know, but I, you can... But I, you can argue that they're not going to get much benefit one way or the other. And we're just trying to expedite it. I think the thing doing it is expediting it, yeah, and it's drug on, it's been talked about it.
And then maybe as we get further into this process, we'll find, when we get roughly a cost estimate, it might change our thought, you know.
Could we get a idea as to what, did we get a number as to what, from the city, how many are dumping in there?
We haven't, we haven't taken that step, but.
Again.
When I talked to Doug Strick about that, he said we can't annex it because it's not currently receiving any direct benefit from DD thirty-five. But I think you can make it sub-district. Is that right?
Yes. Yeah, it'd be a sub of thirty-five.
It would be its own little district within that area?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the ditch would pay some kind of outlet.
And they may be responsible just for that, that area and everybody else would not be.
Well, the upstream's would still pay some.
Okay.
Because it's their.
Some obligation, it's their output.
And we went through all this back some time ago. I think, and Rick brought us some information, that it's also possible to just go in and do this cleanup without doing anything.
Yeah, and it's, it's an acceptable outlet, uh, the.
And if you argue it's really getting less than acceptable, that's why the whole discussion, that obviously the thing there is that DD thirty-five, uh, branch C is still going to pay that bill, but can do it without even the easements and anything. They have the right to maintain. This was because of this, set, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, very minimal cost, easement wise.
Right, oh yeah.
That it makes it look like you're not just.
It's an existing ditch that you're not going to really do much with, so it isn't worth much.
Right. I.
Value wise.
I suggest that we keep moving forward with where we are with the easements and the clean out sooner than later for the benefit of the drainage of the big, you know, amount of ground that we're talking about up here. Because otherwise I see this languishing around for another ten years and it's not going to get better.
Like, like my thought was, let's keep proceeding the way we are and then we'll, then we'll know a dollar amount at least that we're looking at and we can get some estimates from some people to what it takes to clean it. That might change our thought process when we see what the costs are too.
The only problem with the sub-district and the annexation, you start talking that, the, the, just the, uh, fees of getting that put together.
The process of building.
Process, the dollar amount goes up a lot, no matter how cheap Rick works and the, it's, that's going to go up and the thing of it is, the upper part of the district still is going to pay towards that clean out. So versus adding exponential costs, that's not going to really make the, the clean out any different. I think that's why moving forward, like you said, with where we are, unless we see something that's just way completely different than what we think today.
Let's hold off on this discussion until next week because we got Des Moines watershed floodplain.
Good one, Dave.
Yeah.
And see what that's all about, because that could be in the floodplain up through there. DD thirty-five, so.
It, it's specific.
I just thought I'd bring that up.
No, but that's a good discussion, Dave brings up a huge.
Those annexation fees, are they then charged to the districts?
There's no actual annexation fees, it's just the cost.
Okay, well, the cost to do it, then is that, are those costs?
That goes on to the landowners who are being annexed.
Okay, just the ones who are being annexed, huh?
And some upstream also pay. It gets portioned out.
Okay, that's why I was wondering, so the county itself is not on the hook for, for that cost that goes to that watershed?
Yeah, yeah, for that watershed. The DNR forester that would be in charge of your area is, is, uh, his name is Joey Herring. Uh, he's out of Iowa Falls, I called him, left a message last week, I'd like to talk to him about maybe helping out with marking trees. Haven't heard back, it was late in the week when I got ahold of him, so.
Okay.
Okay.
I just want to say, today's point, that's a good idea, because there is a meeting and I plan to attend, it's on Wednesday.
On Wednesday, twelve, ten to twelve, and I don't know what that's about, because it's, they just said to watershed, so.
It's a discovery meeting, it involves, for some unknown reason, FEMA and the DNR. And it mentions specifically drainage ditch thirty-five, which we're talking about, and this is Des Moines River watershed, so.
That's here?
That's, it's at the EMA office.
The EMA office, dump to merchant manager office.
Wednesday.
Oh, Wednesday.
Starts at ten o'clock.
IGD meeting too.
What time does it start?
Ten.
Oh, I'm going to be in, I'm going to be in Pokie.
What's your meeting?
No, 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 that's, listen.
They changed it to Webster County on Wednesday.
That's a very good point, Dave.
Just find out what they've got.
Yeah, let's, let's get to that.
FEMA Homeland Security thing and.
What they're doing.
So let's see what that's all about.
Oh, okay.
Moving on.
The other thing you want to make sure is, if there's going to be more of us there, then make sure Peggy publishes it so we are not in trouble with the.
Six. My six is already pretty full, I can't add anymore.
Yeah, don't add it, I'm going to go to this.
Ten o'clock.
Okay, DD eleven sub five, canceling property damage discussion.
Earth.
Probably got sheep fever. Got sheep fever.
There's no decisions we're asking for today, this is just to give you kind of a indication of how we've looked at this area as far as area of compaction. This is, you're looking basically south, southwest from the, where the drone is setting just above the high point and that's where these fence lines come together. This doesn't tell the whole story, but it takes, catches all the large areas. We marked the ones that we could take like, say fifty feet by four hundred and seventy-five feet. Those kinds of things are all on here. But there's other individual tracks or just dual tracks that we included. Uh, for example, we had, uh, we're, we allowed like two feet for, on each side for the, the tools. I don't know if that's correct or not, I, I don't know the size of the tires. I know some of the trailers have just one large tire in the back. But we have ten areas seventy-five feet long by four feet wide, a hundred, or five areas a hundred feet long by four feet wide. Two areas two hundred feet long by four foot wide, those are all added in to get the totals that we have. I apologize, I didn't get a chance to study this.
Blue lines where they're supposed to have been?
Yes, yep, the blue lines are representation of where.
The easement.
Easement falls, yep.
And the red lines are where they actually went?
Yes, yep. Now, was there not a driveway where the easement started? No, there wasn't a driveway down below, uh, so that they could come off the road. And that's for the reason this happened. Typically, don't they make a driveway? Yes. Because I know other projects have been out there, make a driveway right there, that's where. They asked us about it and we talked to the secondary roads and they, they do it, but, um, he didn't ask for it in this case. Okay. And you, and I think you're all aware, what happened was the, the contractor ended up talking to the tenant. And they forgot to hold the landowner permit. And also I think on this, this was, it would be no till, so these areas were not going to be worked. I have not come up with a number to allow per acre to this. Like I said, we just got this put together very recently. We're able to use known distances on here from our plan and our topographic survey from the beginning in order to come up with lengths. Uh, I feel we're very close in the areas. The, the time that this will have to be decided or should be decided is at the completion hearing. It's good to have the input, you can, any input you can get at this point to work with to try and address questions. Definitely not asking for any decisions here, just trying to get a sign. Just giving this information.
So these long two, I'm assuming is that where, um, product was brought in and out? Like pipe?
Yeah.
Rock?
A lot of, a lot of stuff was rock, yes. Yeah, didn't take too many trucks to get quite a bit of pipe in there.
Right.
But rock, lots and lots of piles. I have a question. Is there going to be other landowners that are going to be coming up with maps like this and other? I don't know, I haven't heard any to talk, we haven't been addressed, asking, asked for anything. This is the point where without the drive down below and the high point up here, it just, they thought this would work for them. And the contractor knows he made a mistake, he called me and basically said that after this had happened.
Who is the contractor?
Gerke.
Yeah, Gerke, yeah. Out of Wall Lake? Oh, okay, okay. Yeah.
Have you provided the contractor with this information?
No, no.
But you will.
I will, yeah.
Because, in all fairness, this is kind of on the contractor, is it not?
Yes, yeah, oh yes. I agree with you. Yeah. Because I mean, they're there aware of the easement, they know how big it is. Mm-hmm, yeah, oh yeah, absolutely.
And I did have discussion with a couple of the gentlemen from Gerke, and they are aware of this, so obviously you want to get this to them.
Yeah, we'll get it to them, but not soon as well.
Yeah, sooner than later. So, in a nutshell, as far as what we have jurisdiction over, we just went through that. This really falls back on the contractor. And I think they fully understand that. Correct me if I'm wrong, Rick.
I, yeah, they do.
I don't think there's any, any surprises to them that this is their.
No, no.
Concern.
No, and I'm hoping that something can be resolved before the completion hearing.
Good, that would be best.
That'd be nice.
That'd be best.
Yes, yeah.
Well, has, has Carmen given any indication as to what's there?
Got it to her this morning, so she hasn't had a chance to do much with it, so.
Because I guess I'm, I'm curious to know that that was corn stubble, I'm assuming?
Yes.
So, none of these were, say, tracks from the, uh, catch cart bringing corn out to the road or out to the end, into the field, or?
Bruce, I don't think so.
Yeah.
Um, I came up here, went out to the farm on, um, November first, came to the top of the hill on August. That day there was no snow, I think I was up here two weeks later and there was snow. And actually the tracks are more visible when there's snow.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
I was happy that you could see them this vividly.
Well, and I guess, and I'm not defending the contractor, but he, somebody talked to the farmer and said, evidently got his permission, so I, I, but that still doesn't take the easement out of the, that's the reason that it's put in there, correct?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I'll get the information to them right away.
I mean, I, I don't know, uh, like I said, we, we did our due diligence.
Yeah, and.
Report, and the contractor's aware of this, Rick has information, it's a little bit, yeah, more quantified now, it's a good picture.
Is it okay if I give the contractor your phone number?
He's got it.
Okay, I thought he thought he did.
He filled on the first.
Okay, I thought he might have it, but I just wanted to be sure, okay.
Who'd you talk to, Rick, when you say you talked to?
Jeremy Moss.
How many total acres are we looking at here? Can I just say see?
Three point three three.
That's the total? Yes.
Total, total, and that says approximate compaction along north, field edge is one point one four.
Yeah, so, so it's, yeah, it's four point four seven total, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I got a question that goes back to those other two that we just discussed. When we talk about the sixty, forty, twenty-five, fifteen, would we be looking at the same thing for this?
I wouldn't think so.
I don't think.
Are you talking about one time?
More like the first year at the most. Yeah, the biggest effect would be the first year. Free stall gets rid of a lot of your compaction, otherwise you'd have, um, you know, two years of that would eliminate a lot of compaction. For example, the, the line way on the left here, I think that was probably nearly all return trips after making, going out here. So they were unloaded, so probably not as, it wouldn't be as severe, but. Yeah, I. I got a question for you, Rick. Yeah. Does your, does your company have the equipment to test compaction, compaction soil? We can test. You know, you got one of those probes, you probe the ground and. Not really, we, we can do bearing capacity with a, a profilometer, but no, not the. I just, I just had a question. I just thought if you did, you could go out there. Yeah. And see what kind of compaction. See how it is further down. And I'm looking for N R C S or F S A, has somebody that would be willing to do that, I don't know. Yeah, it's, it's.
And it's another quantifiable measure.
Yeah, yeah.
This is distance and area.
But we couldn't do that until.
Right.
Warner warmed up.
It'd really be compacted right now.
I was.
But on the flip side, with very little snow covering, like Rick mentioned, the free stall cycle, that's very advantageous to this.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Very advantageous to it.
Because, I mean, when we're doing the damages like over a permanent easement, we're looking at this disturbance of the soil and that, that's why it goes over for five years instead of just one year. Yes. Anyway, okay.
We're still talking under four acres according to their calculation.
Well, it's very good that you got, you're getting this quantified, like Rick said, if, but to me, the, the, the compaction, which you can get, there's probably a technical term for the instrument.
Yeah.
That would be on the contractor as well, that's not, none of this is something that is the district, which is.
Right.
We're the trustees.
Right, that's right. And I brought that up too, with me.
This isn't something that we're talking to, uh, assess any of these costs back to the district.
Nope, definitely not.
So, if, but you get them this information, and obviously, I'm sure they have your phone numbers as well.
Oh, yeah.
If they have any questions for you.
Yeah. We'll probably scan it and email it to them and, yeah, just explain, we'd be interested in any comments or.
I'd also put on there the, the date for the final. Didn't we just put that together?
I don't think so.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that was on the.
That's for the easement, right. That's just for the. You did, or just for the easements?
Okay.
Not for the whole project?
All right, all right.
We're still waiting for a little information from Gerke to do the final pass.
All right.
And you just mentioned the resolution, this would be the final final, basically, the.
Yeah, yeah, the completion.
Completion.
This is it, done.
So they've got, they having said that, they've got all the time to get this resolved.
Yes.
A little time always seems to.
Go by quick.
Go real quick and then we're.
But we know at this point, it's more than the forty days that we just put down for the.
Yeah.
Earing.
Yeah.
Well, let's keep that on the front chart and make sure that that makes our list of to-do, to keep that moving forward, get that finished.
Just wrote down, put Jensen information to contractor now.
Perfect. Is that doable, Carmen?
Yeah, I guess it's premature, but I'd offer a suggestion that the contractor be required to get written permission from the owner. Uh, that would alleviate this code and tighter issue. And that any modifications to whatever the contract is with the permissions, when you grant an easement, that if there's verbal modifications, that those become a driving by the owner. I was totally left out of it.
Well, we weren't informed of anything either, so.
No.
Yeah, but I'm not saying that you were. I, I don't even believe that you were, but it, they kept clear enough of, you know, talking to a tenant who has one year left on a, a lease on a sixty to a hundred year project and say, it's okay to drive on this property. I guess could've been avoided with a phone call or some sort of written confirmation that they were authorized to drive here.
It'd be a good thing to discuss at pre-construction meeting. We try to and typically do. But it, that, the problem with that is it doesn't stop a driver from deciding he's gonna put a lawsuit-
That's right, you can't.
When I was, and I will, I guess, take issue with that. Um, on, uh, November first, I talked with Steve Gerke out in the field after talking with you and talking with Trish to determine the easement that was granted. And, um, basically, uh, he agreed, you know, with the specs for what the easement was granted. And, and just set, you know, that he went and talked to my tenant and thought he had authority and so when the tenant said, oh, I-
We should probably put that in, like you say, maybe, I don't know if you can put that in the contract, but it definitely has the, at the-
Pre-construction.
Pre-construction, meaning that would be a good conversation to have with them.
As a reminder, it's landowner, not tenant.
Yeah.
And so as we move down the list, a lot of these are landowners that they may have had the discussion with, which, which may be why we're not giving-
Actually, it could be written into the contract. Any changes to the contract would be discussed with landowners, not tenants. You know, maybe we should put that wording in our contract.
Documentation always helps, I mean, you have that to fall back on and-
Yeah, I was stammered that he could verbally get permission for somebody that wasn't authorized and alter the easement. Or I think he had the authority.
I don't think he altered the easement. I think he just, was a miscommunication where he didn't have the correct authorization, which would've been from you.
Yeah.
Well, that is a taking and a trespassing.
Well.
I'm guessing that when the verbal back and forth between someone driving a truck and someone, yeah, you got, don't worry about it. We've talked to the farmer and he's good with it. Uh, it just went right over the top and they were, it's all for not-
He was on site on November first and, you know, as we're standing on the field, he was calling the truck drivers and saying, you know,
Don't.
Don't deliver anymore.
And he's accepting responsibility.
That's the thing, and, you know, unfortunately, you know, unfortunately, and we dealt with it on other non-drainage things, miscommunication does that.
No, no, it was always this mis, you know.
It isn't that, I don't think we blatantly have to do a huge lot of different things. Rick brings up some good points. You mentioned the pre-construction, it's written in, there is the easement, everybody knows about it. That just, it, it's just an unfortunate lapse of communication here.
And we have areas, like if they hit a sand pocket, it collapses and we have to go a little wider. Uh, those things happen in a lot of jobs. This is not that situation up here, but-
Yeah.
Right.
It does happen other ways.
But you've done good work in putting this together, you're getting it from the contractor. They're aware of it already, so.
Yeah, we'll get it taken care of.
Get it in their hands.
Bingo.
Yep, today or tomorrow, they'll have it in their hands.
Perfect.
Good deal.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Anything else for us?
Oh, um, on the, the dam, on one twenty-five, we contacted Gerke, being the contractor, they, they're friends with Dickie. They're gonna coordinate as far as coming on site and they're supposed to let us know when they come on site to place that rock. You get a chance, when they go over the, the sort of list again, if there's anything we're leaving out, let me know. Any good things taken care of? Trying to do this at least on a monthly basis.
That'd be great.
Yeah. It's a good reminder for me. Like I say, I kinda forgot about ditch ten even, that was just petitioned for, but, uh, yeah.
I know it's a pain and we do it, we're trying to keep that with Trish for all the jobs that we have. And I think we're trying to, that way we as a board get a list so that we can-
Well, we're juggling lots of things and it's easy if you don't pay attention, you drop something.
Well, yeah, you just, you know, things have actually slowed down a little bit. You still got quite a list.
Right.
So, yeah, that's all I have written down anyway.
Trish, you got?
Trish, you got anything?
Nope.
I didn't put you early.
Nope.
Okay, I'm gonna watch you get out of the rain.
That's in a second to go out of drainage, all in fair.
Hi.
Okay, we're back in good conversation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Anything else that you've got come up? Anything you've got, anything coming up? Anybody got anything?
On?
Anything.
Anything? I think we need to take a look at the, uh, contract slash handbook from secondary roads, so we get our mind around that, which we already talked about.
I did, uh, discuss or call Randy Davis this morning, I was for a meeting, questions down in Des Moines. And advised him because Friday I got a call from John Beatty, who said, as far as he knows, there is no change in the state law. So I said, I'm gonna give him Tim Kryenbrink's number, he already has Mike Sexton's, and give him John's number. And I said, we'd be more than happy as a county to be able to have another product to grow, but right now it's not legal in the state, so. Probably not the best plan for you to start.
No, I wouldn't be doing anything illegal.
That's right. Other than that.
This isn't to do with drainage, more wells. I contacted Schumacher about Pioneer and they looked it up in their records. Wells in that vicinity cost anywhere from ten to fifteen thousand, drill private wells.
Possibility for what we talked about last week.
Yeah, you were on the right track, actually.
So we put that money in the air market for the well for Pioneer and forget it then.
Possible solution.
It's possible to drill private wells, pay for them and then just disband the well.
At least the one that's there for either one person or for-
Elevator or whoever wants it.
And, I got a question. Yeah, if you, the visiting owners-
We thought when you get that elevator, we'd take that.
Say, this is your well. And I was not supposed, I don't, I don't want to coin this so we don't have some well hanging out there.
Right.
We have to maintain for thirty years or fifty years.
Well, I think that we have to wait till, um, Bertie comes back with, 'cause she's checking the legality of all of it, to make sure that we could do that.
Okay, so she's taking that part of the work.
I think that's the way, wasn't it, wasn't Bertie taking, seeing if we could possibly-
She is gonna look at that, yeah.
So then she's- She's kinda handling it for the city of Pioneer.
Anything else?
I'm-
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All over?
All right.
Oh, Jerry.
Good job, guys.